Welcome City Council to our Bountiful City Council meeting Tuesday, September 22, 2020. This is our regular session at 7:00 PM. And we did have a work session at 6:00 just before this, and we always want the public to know they're welcome to that meeting as well. They're both noticed, and we're happy to welcome all of you who are here as well. Thanks for taking the time out of your schedules to attend today. We do it. Ms. Chris Simonsen from the council, who is feeling ill this evening, and will feel, look forward to seeing him again. Let's begin by having a pledge of allegiance. We've asked Francisco, our city planner, to lead us in that. Thanks. Thanks, Francisco.
(inaudible)
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 Well, we're always, we're always pleased to invite and have Pastor Mike Bless come
to us from the Good Shepherd Fellowship Church, and he'll offer a word of prayer for us. Thank you, Mike, again for participating in our city council.
Thank you for the invitation. The Apostle Paul wrote, he says, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God." So would you pray with me? Father in heaven, I pray that tonight, as the Bountiful City Council is gathered in business session, that they would certainly acknowledge and respect the fact that you have instituted government, and that they are here at your pleasure to serve for your glory. I pray that they might be guided by your wisdom, that they might have discernment in the affairs they will consider, and that any decisions that are made would certainly be appropriate to your plan. I pray that the words that are spoken would be governed by civility and decency and consideration for others. I also ask for your blessing on the leaders of our city, Father, the department heads and the employees who go out every day to serve us and to keep us safe, to provide various services to us that we might enjoy life here in Bountiful. And I ask God that you would bless each and every one of them in a special way, and let them know that they are doing good work because you have implemented government. Bless now if your blessing on this time tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Bless. Bless you and your, those who serve with you. Thank you very much. This is time now for public comment. For those of you who have been here before, or for those who have not been, this is a 10-minute period of time where the public is welcome to come up to the microphone for up to two minutes. This little machine right here tells you when your two minutes are up, and, and to comment, period. So please give, please give a, your name and your address, if you would. Richard?
My name's Richard Watson, Bountiful. I'm here as Citizen Richard, not Concert Richard.
Okay.
I wanted to talk, just mention UAMPS, and talk about the Carbon Free Power Project. I know that that project is using a small modular reactor, SMR, and it'll be first in the nation. However, I think Bountiful should oppose and opt out of the CFPP project with UAMPS. Three reasons: the cost, production and construction costs will continue to rise, which could lead to cutting corners, which cause, could cause safety problems. Research and studies have found by 2026, 2026 is the estimated completion date by New Scale, the cost of a kilowatt hour will be two times higher than the amount of any other energy source. And of course, safety problems could happen, and those need to be taken into consideration. And then also, the problem with waste. An SMR may be smaller and may produce less waste, but it's still nuclear waste. And it's not just Idaho's problem, which is where this will be. It's everyone's problem. So I encourage Bountiful City Council to vote and pull out of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Please.
Yes, my name is David Williams. I live at 585 North, 1300 East, below the Bee. Periodically, I go on my four-wheeler up to the Bee to try to clean up the parking lot. Three weeks ago, I went up, cleaned up parking lot area, and then I headed up Skyline Drive, and about 200 yards past the end of the fence, as I was cleaning up in the, in the ditches on the side, I ran across probably 50 or 60 spent casings from rifles, pistols. I went further up to the first draw, I don't know what that's called, and I found three boxes of 150 shells, empty, not weather stained or anything, so they must have been very current. 10 years ago, my home was hit by a stray bullet. I don't think it came from the rifle range because it was up high and came down like that and went through, thank heavens, just the rain gutter. So I'm hoping that we can get something solved there. While I was up there, I noticed some very small 24-by-24 signs about shooting and campfires. Nobody's going to read those. Just as you start to head up the road, there was a big sign that talked about fires. Again, I was evacuated during the, during the fire last year. The, three days later, the big, huge sign was torn down. I was glad that it wasn't shot because that's usually what happens with, with signs. And so I was just wondering, I would be happy to somehow volunteer to help with signage or do something so we can get a better response and people seeing what is the requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thanks for your help. Thanks for cleaning up and doing those extra things. We appreciate it. This is on our minds, we want you to know, so thank you. Please.
My name is Rick Gilhart, 354 West, 1500 South. I've spoke up here before about my feelings on apartments and overpopulation and high-density housing that I'm against. So when I heard that the Washington school was getting tore down, I was preparing for a fight. And I went and talked to a lot of the neighbors, and they agreed with a petition, and they agreed with fighting with me. So when I got an email from Kate saying that you had made a decision that this was going to be developed into a park, and I was just elated. So rather than sending everybody an email thanking you, I wanted to come in person to say, "What a great decision you made, and it's, it's the best for Bountiful and the citizens here, and I really appreciate it, and thank you for doing that."
Thank you, Rick. That's really kind of you to come in person. Thank you.
My name is Tammy Jones. I live at 2282 Cave Holloway. I've been a resident here for 24 years, love the city, love the utilities, love the various events that go on, and I love how people pull together like we just did with the hurricane force winds and work together to keep it safe and clean. With that said, I was kind of very disappointed with the lack of community awareness of the new deer management program that was voted in recently with very little citizen input. I'm, I'm wondering what the compelling reason is that that was decided upon. I had conversations with Jim Christensen. He's the Northern Regional Wildlife Manager for DWR, and he stated that since 2018, our deer population has actually been declining. And I've been talking to a lot of residents in the area. Everyone's noticed there's less, that's including urban or mountain deer. Car accidents aren't as much, so I'm just wondering why. I think we have to be stewards of our community, which includes our wildlife, and I think that there's more humane ways to go about managing our deer. In fact, I have for you a manual put together by the Humane Society, has a lot of good information that I'd like to share with you. I also have a petition of 2,700 signatures.
Gary, is there someone that could maybe get back with her a little bit more explanation for what we did and why we did it? So Tammy, we'll get, we'll get somebody to give you a call and maybe give you a little more explanation of where the, the council is coming from on this, on, on this decision. And that might be helpful. It might not be what you want, but it might be helpful. Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Grumal. I live at 2760 Irene Drive, and I'm here to talk about the deer, too. Chief Ross stated at your last city council meeting, when you guys voted for the motion to pass, that between 2014 and 2019, you removed around 700 deer. And I know Councilwoman Harris asked how many deer we even have left, and no one can answer that question. So my problem is, if we've already removed 700 deer, which I don't know if that's a fact or not a fact, why are we still wanting to get rid of more deer when we have no idea how many deer there are? And I have talked with the mayors from, which, from North Salt Lake, and from Fruit Heights, and Leighton, and all our sister cities, Caseville, and there is not one of those mayors that have implemented anything like this in their, in their cities. In fact, Fruit Heights said that they had a program where they had a lethal program to get rid of the deer, and it was such a controversy and such a problem that they have gotten rid of that. And I can tell you right now, Mayor, I have emailed you, and I had no response back from you, but I will take this public because we have not made it at all knowledgeable to the citizens of Bountiful that this is exactly what you were voting to do at the last city council meeting in August. You had it on your website, and I'm sorry, but nobody looks at your website unless they're looking for something specific. If you really want to get a fair vote of what the people of Bountiful think, I think you should put it in your newsletter, or I think you should put it on your agenda to be voted on in November. But I think none of the other sister cities in our county do it, and I think we are making a big mistake because I will take it public, and I will let everybody know that we are Bountiful the barbaric and we are not Bountiful the beautiful.
Thank you for your time. Would you do me a favor? Because I really felt like I answered every dear email I've had. If you had sent me another one, I promise that I'll, that I'll send it to you, because I didn't think I'd missed anybody. Okay, thank you for, for your comments, and we appreciate it. We'll look for a, and consider, oh, do we have one more? Okay, please.
I'm Ron Schetzler, 358 South, 200 East, and I want to let you know that I support you with the deer program. You go out in the wild, the DWR looks at the herds and determines how many should be killed. We don't have that in Bountiful. There's, you can't go out and shoot them, so it's just doubling every two or three years, the population, which is a hazard to people out on the street. If you're driving down the street, a deer jumps out, you try to avoid it, you're creating another accident if you don't hit the deer. Our children are at danger, our grandchildren are at danger. We now have so many deer that are being born in the city that we now have cougars in the city. I've been within 15 feet of a cougar in my own yard. So that's a hazard to our children and our grandchildren. I support you 100% in eliminating, not by shooting them, but by shipping them out of the area, transporting somewhere else. I think if you do kill them, I think the food pantry would enjoy that extra help to feed the people that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. One, one more, because 10 minutes is up, but we'll, please, please, please.
So I've never been to a city council meeting before. I don't really know how things work. My name's Rafael Mordo. I live at 2996 Vista Circle. I came here specifically today because of the deer. And I didn't come to promote what you, it sounds like you've decided to do, and I didn't come to promote what the other side is asking not to be done. The reason why I came here is because, Mike, I, again, I'm not quite sure how this works. You guys can educate me if you'd like to, but from what, the little bit that I understand as far as government goes, from local all the way up to federal is, everybody that sits right here is, are the agents of the people. And so my concern is, something is maybe trivial to some people, and obviously not to others, is deer. Why is that, why are the people, why do the people not know about this? Why is this not a decision that the people have made, since the city council are the agents and the representatives of the people? That's my concern. Deer are annoying, they ruin my grass, they eat everything. So again, I, I'm really undecided in that. My main concern is, why is this not put to a vote to the people? It sounds like, again, I may be limited in information, I may not understand, but it sounds like the mayor or the council made this decision. How come the people of Bountiful have not been made aware of this? How come they are not making the decision, and then you as the city council, as their agents, are following through with their, with their votes? The only reason I, and I'll end with this, the only reason I knew about this is because I went to the fruit trucks on Friday, and there was somebody passing out flyers. And again, my concern is, as agents of the people, how come the people are not making this decision? If I'm unaware that the people have made the decision, then educate me. But as far as I, the little bit I know, it sounds like the council or the mayor made the decision, decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Rafael. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes for, held on August 25, 2020. If there are no corrections or additions, then I would look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, I just would like to ask for a personal privilege and just let the council and the community members know that I just have to, I am, I have a family commitment, a son's performance, and so I'm just leaving briefly, but I'll be back, and I'll be interested to review the items I missed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're excused.
Thank you.
Thanks. So with that, I'd look, Kate?
I'd love to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 25, 2020. Second?
Second from Millie. So we've got this, we're going to take just enough time to do that. Any, if there's no other corrections or additions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will do council reports, and we'll start with you, Kate.
Sure, thank you. For the members of the public that don't come to city council meetings very often, and that took the time to give public comment, I just want to give it editorial that the reason why we don't respond in the public comment period is that that is your opportunity to give us feedback. We reserve that for, for you to give the comments, and, and we don't necessarily counter or answer questions right away. If there's something you'd love to have us answer, please stick around after the meeting or get the contact information with the staff or all of our contact information on the city website. In terms of my council report, like most of Bountiful, I spent big chunks of the last week to 10 days chopping down trees, and I would just like to report that I have some really awesome neighbors. I met neighbors I didn't know very well. I think the things you get to know about your neighbors when you're creatively trying to figure out whether it's appropriate to chainsaw a tree while standing on it are really interesting things to know about your neighbors. Knowing who has trucks, knowing who has trailers, knowing who has chainsaws is really important. And it's always a little bit sad that a disaster sometimes helps you meet neighbors that you haven't gotten to know very well before, but if there's a silver lining to a windstorm, it is, you know, some neighbors that I have become better acquainted with and look forward to spending time with in less windy, masky times.
Thank you. Thanks, Kate, and very, thanks for that dialogue between us. That's a good explanation that Kate gave for that. Thank you, Millie.
Just like everyone else, we've, we've been cleaning up a lot with the windstorm. The youth council has been active the last few weeks. We had a really great activity two, two weeks ago where we did a graffiti cleanup up by the Bee, and then just this last Saturday, we helped lay great gravel. Well, actually, they were rocks, they weren't gravel. Councilman Simonson said it was going to be gravel, but they were rocks. We helped lay that at the Veterans Park, and that was a great turnout, and that is coming together nicely. And then actually, this Saturday, the youth council in conjunction with the few of the bike teams in the area, the mountain bike teams area, we are going to clean up two trails. So the youth council has been busy with service, and I know a lot of them have been very busy serving in their, in their communities with the cleanup. So my cup has been full of good things the last few weeks, and I'm, for that, I'm grateful to see these youths doing really, really wonderful, wonderful things, and taking the initiative, the initiative on their own to do it. So it's been great.
Thank you, Millie. Richard?
Just one thing. It was recommended in our power commission meeting by one of the power commissioners that the city look around among city employees, and visited briefly with Gary about this, and maybe reach out to those who went above and beyond their normal duties for a significant period of time, probably, and, and reward them a little bit financially, or give them some sort of a recognition. So at some point, I'm sure that Gary will have something sent out to us, and I'd encourage everybody to express their appreciation through that means as well. Thanks, Gary.
Wonderful idea. Thank you, Richard. Anything else?
No, I think I've used the rest of my time.
Great. We, we're missing Chris Simonsen tonight, but he would have asked Richard Watson to say something about concerts in the park, and so we'll turn some time over to Richard.
Before I mention concerts, I wanted to talk about the EOC that we had during the windstorm. I did two shifts on that EOC. And about the callbacks, I did Friday morning, and we were doing callbacks, and that was per Lieutenant Dave Edwards. And when we called those people back, so many of them expressed their appreciation for the callback. So this is a great city, because we, this is showing the people that we actually do care about, these people that had problems. So I know there's still people out there probably still mad at the city, but the majority of them are, are very appreciative of the help that they received, so I wanted to pass that along. And I wanted to pay kudos to Lieutenant Dave Edwards and Rob Hunter for managing the EOC the, the way they did, and I just want to say that those two guys are really awesome. I already told Chief Ross that, but we, we have two of the best guys for emergency problems, so I'm happy to, and I'm so glad that I get to work with them on EOC. Concerts, so our last one was the last week of February, or August. We had four concerts during that month, and all four went really well. Interesting that our first one was, was still a good crowd, but each week, crowds got bigger, and yet we were able to social distance, and everyone had their little family groups all around the park. So, and Brock didn't paint enough circles, but everyone figured it out, so. So it was great. So I'm sad that we lost a couple of trees, because there's less shade now for concerts, but we'll work it out, so. So it was a great, great concert season, and I want to thank the city council for voting to go on with that, because I was already prepared to cancel our concerts, but we went ahead. People loved it, people were happy, and we, we had a lot of good comments about our concerts, so thank you. And to end, finish this off, RJ Wranglers, we're, we're working on that. We do have a date, December 18, but we need to figure out details to see if we can actually pull this off. And so I'm meeting with Gary Hill and Galen, and looks like Chris won't be available, but we're going to be meeting this week about, see if we can pull off RJ Wranglers. So we'll let you know. So I'm pretty sure we can do it, and I think we will, but we need to figure it out, so. Anyway, any questions about concerts? Good luck. Thanks. Well, one thing about RJ Wranglers, because, because it's in Woods Cross High School, we're not the ones setting the guidelines on COVID-19. The school district is, so we have to follow their, so that's something that's off our shoulders, so.
Hey, Richard, we can hardly say enough about all the volunteer hours that you've put into this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
BCYC report, do we have?
I apologize, that was my mistake.
Well, we changed, yeah, we changed weeks, so I, I think we're just great there.
Yeah, thank you.
Consider of approval, council, for expenditures greater than $1,000 paid August 17 and 24, 24th on 2020, expenditures greater than $1,000 paid August 31 and September 7, 2020, and the July 2020 financial report. Any questions about any of those? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
Happy to approve those expenditures on the financial report as printed.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. So that's Kate for a second. You've got that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. And we have a Utah Taxpayer Association there, thank you, presentation. We're glad that you're here. What's your name?
Rusty Cannon. I'm the vice president with the Utah Taxpayers Association.
Thanks, Rusty. Thanks. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it, Mayor and council members. We, I've been anxious to talk about this project with city councils, and we appreciate the opportunity of being able to speak to you. Some cities have allowed us to speak, and some have actually turned us away and not wanted to hear what we have to say, and so we're appreciative of you, of you all listening. So you probably have received some of our emails, seen our press releases or information that we put out about our opposition to UAMPS members staying in, in the Carbon Free Power Project. And I just have three, three basic tenets that we wanted to reiterate. Your, your power staff has been phenomenal as far as the information that they've provided to the council. We've actually used some of that information, the research we've done, and we're appreciative of that. But in our view, municipal power companies should not be in the venture capital business per se, in the sense that this project essentially, the city power companies are acting as seed investors, as venture capitalists. And you're going to bear the risks of cost overruns and delays. Keep in mind, this is a project that in 2017 was supposed to cost 3.6 billion. The cost as of today is now 6.12 billion. So those continue, those costs continue to rise. In our view, if small modular nuclear reactor power is going to work, private markets will bear that risk. And places like Bountiful can look to purchase power from these projects when it's done, if it is completed. So essentially, the best case scenario for Bountiful or other participants is that you get market rate power apparently by 2030 at this point. Keep in mind, this was supposed to have power online in 2016. So that's the best case scenario. The worst case scenario is that if you don't take one of the next three or four off-ramps, you commit to higher and higher levels of financial contribution, is what you're aware is, your next step is 19.9 million amongst UAMPS members with this off-ramp that has now been moved to October. 19.9 million amongst UAM's members. With this off-ramp that has now been moved to October, the end of October is our understanding, instead of the end of September, as of a decision a few days ago, you commit to another 19.9 million. And your share, I think, is around $600,000 to $700,000 of that, because you're a 3.2% participant. Then the next round, if you don't take that off-ramp, goes to 658.4 million in costs. And then the final construction phase is now scheduled to cost 4.7 billion amongst UAM's members. So we think that could put ratepayers and in a worst-case scenario, taxpayers in a bad situation and being left holding the bag on this project. So keep in mind, three cities have now left. Logan, Lehigh, and Kaysville voted to leave the other night. So that's about 16% of the participation. That, it's our understanding that costs will now shift to you and to others that do stay in, if you do decide to stay in. And so it would further raise your costs for the next round. And the, and the final point we wanted to make is subscription level. So if this was a project that was looking good and looking viable, we would assume that subscription, subscriptions would be coming in the door. That's essentially your measurement of how the product is selling. It's only 30% subscribed before Lehigh, Logan, and Kaysville got out. So that's now even less than 30%. And they need to get to, or their, their goal is to get to 100% subscription. So now you're down in the 25%, somewhere in that range, 25% or so, subscription level. To us, that shows that as you look at it, the risks are just too high. And the best decision is, is to leave the project. As I mentioned, you have till the end of October now, instead of the end of September, to make the decision to leave. But you do need to, as you know, make a motion to have a vote to leave the project, or you automatically stay in. The last comment we wanted to make as well is, we don't have a position on nuclear power, obviously. We hope this project works. We hope nuclear power is a viable way to provide power for cities or for anybody that needs power in the future. But the financial risk is enormous for cities. And we think that it is the right decision to, to, to pull out. So we would urge you, as we've stated before, to make a motion, put it on your agenda sometime in October, doesn't have to be now in September, to vote to, to leave the project. And I'd happy to answer any questions if, or, or step away.
Are there any questions?
Sure.
Yeah, please, please.
Did the Taxpayers Association take a position on the Intermountain Power Project in Delta when it was built?
You know, I was not with the association back then, so I'm not quite sure what the answer was back then, as far as what it was to, to generate the coal power you were talking about.
Yeah, switching over to natural gas. Did the Taxpayers Association take a position on Bountiful City filing on the two hydro projects that Bountiful City now owns that weren't cheap at the time, but now are our cheapest resource?
Again, I'm not quite sure. Because I've been with the association for two years. I apologize. But I'm happy to get that info for you. Yeah.
Very good. Thanks.
Anything else, mayors?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the time. I sincerely appreciate it.
Thanks, Rusty, for being here. We appreciate you. And we'll turn some time over to Mr. If you nod off a couple of times or something, Alan, if you kind of nod off and like you're going to sleep or something.
Yeah, I was back there just enjoying my little rest here this morning.
We're going to completely understand.
Like I say, if you hadn't woke me up, I might have been asleep here at the end of this. Anyway, Mayor and Council, it's a privilege to be here tonight to talk to you. And like I say, I do support the fact that there was a lot of work done in the wind and just echo the fact that my guys and the team and all the people we brought in, what a great job I thought they did. And I did say it went a lot longer than I wished it had of. I don't know if we would have done different with just the amount of work and everything that had to be done. But, you know, when the 2011 came along, we broke a record of 26 hours, the longest outage those cities ever had, that at my time, we went two and a half days. So I never dreamed would have something that would double that and go more into five days. But there was a lot of work that went on. Like I say, as a power department, I feel for the people who are out of power for five days because, you know, how tough it is. We get used to it every five or 10 minutes, and it was a tough deal. But I will say, I was proud of both our employees and even the employees that we brought from our other group that came in here. There was a lot of stuff done, a lot of hours. It was amazing. Like I say, that first day, we had several employees that came to work and worked for 23 straight hours. It was, like I say, so it was, like I say, pretty phenomenal at that. So I just wanted to know how proud I am. But I will talk about that I'm here tonight, to not talk about that, but to talk about what, some poles that we bought. And it's really kind of interesting because when COVID come along, kind of got flat-footed with the mask and hand sanitizer and all the things. And I just didn't really think it was going to get there. But we came back and got concerned that, you know, with this going along, we may have inventory issues. So we actually brought our inventory level up because I was worried about COVID, not because I thought, hey, there might be a windstorm that comes along this time of year. So inventory was a much easier thing to deal with in this time than it was in 2011. We had most of the inventory in stock this year. However, as we got into it, we got into it and started realizing that poles was going to be a big issue. And got, look at what we did have, excuse me. And we did order these poles because these were the poles that are available. And so these 46 poles are not all we need. It's just all that was available at the time. Because what you're going to look at is, is you're going to realize most of these poles are coming from Canada and the Northwest, which, you know, the Northwest is on fire. We're also in hurricane season as we've seen everything's going on. And poles are getting very tough to get. So we picked this order up. I will say I will be back again probably next month or in a few weeks with another pole order to get it back. Because this is basically just going to get us back to our bare minimum, what we need to get out at this point. So anyway, we did purchase these 46 poles from McFarland Cascade for $30,068. And as typical, we'll put these into inventory. And, you know, we'll just expense them as we pull them back out as we use them. So we're sort of asking for permission slash forgiveness because I signed the PO in the middle of the windstorm to get them here on the way because I didn't know if we were going to have enough poles with everything that was going on. So, so I'm begging for forgiveness as much as anything at this point on this order.
Oh, like you're really lucky, Alan. So I would look, I would, are there, are there any questions?
I will say this one, the power commission, they did support my forgiveness this morning.
So I, I look for a motion to approve. Yes.
Mayor, I move that we approve the purchase of 46 wood poles from McFarland Cascade in the amount of $30,068, and that we offer Mr. Johnson our full forgiveness.
Yeah, so good.
And, and grateful for our thinking.
Awesome. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is done.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hey, Gary. I, I'm, so, so Gary, can you just really succinctly, for a minute, just tell about the poles that you went to look at over the mountain?
Yeah.
I just think it's really pretty fascinating. We'll just be short, but I, to understand what these people have to go through.
Yeah, day, I guess it was the first day of the, of the windstorm. We turned off the transmission line. Was it Tuesday, Alan?
Well, I got home at 12:30 in the night while I picked it up. When I picked it up on the, the news thing that there was a wind coming, realized I needed to come home. I got home about 12:30 in the morning. I did not turn it off there. But when I came back to work at 2:33 in the morning, the first thing I did is hadn't turned the line off because I was dry as the mountain was. I did not want to start the mountain on fire.
So we have a 26-mile transmission line from the Echo Hydro Plant to, to Bountiful City that everybody, if you take a peek, you know, you can see, sort of starts east of the temple and just keeps on going. And so before we could turn the line back on, we needed to inspect it to make sure there wasn't damage. So we didn't start a fire restarting the line. And so I had the opportunity on Tuesday morning, Monday morning, I guess it was just yesterday. Days are long right now.
It seems like a long time the last couple of weeks, but it was just Monday.
But we, we hired a helicopter to take the power department crew, and they had an extra seat. And I guess they needed some ballast. And so they invited me to come and follow the line all the way to Echo and inspect each of the poles along the way. And so it took about an hour and a half for the full trip. And it was about 20 miles an hour, 25 miles an hour there, and then about 120 miles an hour back. But we had the opportunity to, to look at each one of the poles. You have, and I have always had in my mind this vision of what a, what the power line looks like going to Echo. And in my mind, it was sort of like, yep, there's a big ridge here that we know. And then it's kind of like Wyoming, right? It just kind of is flat all the way to Echo. And I had no idea the number of significant steep drops between here and there that the power line has to span and the kind of terrain that those power poles are set in. There's a look that Alan and Jess get on their face every time they talk about maintenance of that line. And I understand it now to a degree. It's total, it would be totally different on the ground. There are places where you could, you can't even stand upright by yourself, let alone get equipment that's required to place the poles. And, I mean, it really was something else to appreciate the engineering that went into that, but also how that line is constructed. So, and what it takes to maintain it. I'm happy to report that there were, there was no damage anywhere along the line. We, we found a place where we're going to have to trim some trees pretty quick. But the, the line is intact and, but what a, what a structure. What a structure.
So what those people have to do to maintain this electricity to our city is, when Gary was telling me, that was really impressive. Really impressive. So, thank you.
And we have a group going for a leisurely hike tomorrow with their chainsaws and their, the six-wheelers where they can get to it to go take care of the trees so we can turn it back on by the end of the week.
Thanks, Helen.
Mr. Mayor, since we asked Alan to come back, I'd like to just say a few words to him to pass on to his employees. Two of your employees live within a few houses of, of my home, including one that lost a fairly significant tree in his backyard. And I know that he wasn't able to take care of it because he was very busy working with the power crew. And I don't think there was a part of our city that didn't lose just tons of trees. But these two neighbors that are Bountiful Power employees, you know, left their own homes and the mess at their own homes, and spent days and days and days working to get other people's homes and other people's power back restored. Luckily, the neighbors were able to pitch in and help get one particular tree in the backyard down for him. But it, it wasn't lost on me that, that these employees who maybe don't get as much notice as some of our other public safety employees when we're in a disaster, left to go serve others and, and, you know, didn't get an opportunity to, to help their own family and just had to say goodbye and figure it out for a few days. And so I certainly noticed, and I think the city noticed. So will you please let them know that I was, I was just so impressed that they served others during this time?
I'd be glad to pass that on to them.
Thanks, Alan. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Gary. GO bond.
Thank you, Mayor. On August 11th, city council passed a resolution placing a general obligation bond question on the November ballot. The purpose of the bond election is to ask voters whether or not they would support a tax increase to purchase Washington Elementary, improve the fields and recreation opportunities there, and also to improve and expand the city's trail system. The bond proceeds would be used as follows. Generally, $3.5 million to purchase the 10-acre site from the school district, $2.5 million to make improvements to the property, and $2 million to expand and improve the trail system. The bond election will be held on November 3rd, but state law requires that before a bond election and before a city issues bonds following a successful bond election, that the city hold a public hearing to, quote, "receive input from the public with respect to, A, the issuance of the bonds, and B, the potential economic impact that the improvement facility or property for which the bonds pay all or a part of the cost will have on the private sector." So tonight, we, there is no action that you're taking. We're just simply asking you to open a public hearing to take comment on those two issues, the issuance of bonds and the potential economic impact that the purchase of the property and improvement of the property and the trails would have on the community. And then happy to, following the public hearing, if there are any questions you have or issues that are raised, staff's happy to answer those questions.
Thank you, Gary. So with that, we will open this to a public hearing. Just a couple of suggestions is that if, if people are, have said already what you're going to say, you may just make your comments a little shorter because those have been said. Please give your name when you come up. And again, your, your name and your address. And it's open now to you. So you just come up to the, come up to the podium here.
Good evening. My name's Ron Mortensen. I'm with the city group, co-founder of Citizens for Tax Fairness.org, and I'm a Bountiful resident. You know, I, I think I've mentioned to some of you, I think it's unfortunate that $27,700 has already been spent to pay an outside organization that touts its success in getting bonds passed, to come up with the wording for the bond and, and assist with the wording for the bond and to gauge public support. And when we're looking at this, we can't look at it as just a standalone item. I'd point out that in the past two years, residents have seen a 20% or $24 a year increase in the flat rate customer service charge on the power bill. A new $24 a year streetlight fee, a rate change that will cost electric users an additional $400,000 per year, and a $6 per year stormwater fee increase. And if this bond passes, Bountiful City property taxes on a $371,000 home will increase by 26%. That's 166, 3257 on 166. The sewer district is planning to increase sewer fees this coming year by an additional $66 a year, and its property taxes by roughly $23 a year. So that's an $89 per year increase. And I'd argue that the sewer district is really a must-have. We have to have that service, whereas a park isn't nice to have. And if you look at it too in Bountiful, the least able to pay or they hit the hardest by taxes. They have also these flat rate customer service fees, regardless of how much you use. I used the example a time before. On a $15 power bill, you pay $12 in customer charge, almost 75 or 76% of the, so a low-power user has really hit hard on that. And we even in tax food, we impose a sales tax on food in Bountiful. So for an insecure family or a senior on a fixed income, the $32.57 that's included in this bond that'll cost you on, on an average home, could buy 25 loaves of bread, or 24 dozen eggs, or nine pounds of hamburger over the year. That's significant to a family living on a, on a fixed income or that's food insecure. So I'd like to just conclude. There's a number of questions to the council to consider on this bond. As I understand it, the school districts, and I've gone over and looked at it, the school districts leveling the property and putting in the sprinkler system and grass on that property. So why does the city need $2.5 million for improvements? And will we be able to see a draft of the inter-local agreement this, that this sale is conditioned on with the school district? And to see how much time will be allowed remain for local citizens to use that land, those playing fields after the school district uses as playing fields for their programs. And that was a condition they put on that. And listening to their debate at their district board meeting, they emphasized that there would be extensive use of those fields by the schools in this area. So what does that leave for the residents of Bountiful? Why are Bountiful residents paying millions of dollars for shared facilities rather than having the school district keep those facilities? And then us taking, in our local agreement with them, to use their facilities rather than raising our taxes by $8 million or $6 million? Then given Bountiful's lack of retail space, that property, which is really at the intersection of Fifth West and Fifth South, could that be used for retail space to increase the tax base rather? tax base rather than having it be a tax-exempt property that's consuming taxpayer resources rather than contributing to the tax base? And can we be assured that the costs will not be higher than currently projected? And I'd note that the cost of the town square, the current approved budget for that is now over $9 million, and the approved budget for the city hall renovation is over $8 million. Another question is, why doesn't the tri-else advisory committee raise private funds for trail improvements, just like the veterans are doing for the Veterans Park? And finally, I, driving in, I see a lot of signs now popping up in favor of the bond, and a lot of those are in park strips. And, and I believe that's not authorized. I know for political campaign, if you put your sign in a park strip, the city comes by and takes them out and stacks them. They used to stack them over next to city hall. So if you drive through the city now, most of those signs are in park strips. And the question, and I'm not sure the answer to this, do they have to have on there who's paying for those signs? Because on a campaign sign, you do have to note who's paying for it, and on these signs, they aren't. So anyway, based on that, I'd encourage you to vote no on the bond.
Thanks, Ron. Others?
Larry Mulcock, I'm a recent Bountiful citizen.
Welcome.
Pardon?
Welcome.
Thanks. I want to echo what Ron has said about the, the bond issues. Seems to me that the school district could improve parks, which they're doing, and we could have an agreement with them rather than increase our taxes and then have to maintain it long-term. The other thing is the, again, with trails, lots of, lots of interested parties who want to have good, good trail systems can improve and maintain the trails and raise funds for those things, just like they did with the Veterans Park. And I think, I guess, I just want to endorse what Ron has said regarding opposition to the bond, and I, I hope that it fails.
Thanks. Any others? Okay, with that, we, okay, oh, please. Okay, thanks.
So Alex Densley, 443 Jerry Drive. So just kind of a little bit with what Ron has said and some of the other little things on it. I would just like to request, or because you know, this is also feedback from the council, I feel like this process is completely backwards as far as what we've done. I was here when you guys, so the quick background, I was one of the lucky ones who got the fun little letter in the mail that said, "Please take this. My background is in communications training and development emphasis." So I'm a little bit familiar with doing these. Having gone through that survey, I wish that the city would have published that survey as far as what the actual questions were concerning the bond, because I'm trying to re-go off of a month and a half now of memory, to which it was one of the most biased surveys I have seen coming from a background of creating those and trying to get training and development emphasis on. So one is, I'd just like if we do something like this in the future, I'd like to see the city please like lease, lease that kind of information later on so that everybody kind of has a, oh, these are the questions that were asked. Obviously, you can't ask 44, where are we, 42,000, 44,000 of us? Something like that. You know, that question. The, the other thing that I would like to request or possibly see in the future is, obviously, we're having this bond question here now, but, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we already said, yes, we're going to put this bond onto the ballot, which I feel like is a backwards process because even with comments coming from Ron, myself, or anybody else who would like to provide input to the citizen council or having those survey results to them look at themselves and be able to come and discuss those things, it's already a done deal because it's going on the bond in November. So just a little bit of a, please, like in the future, can we possibly address this? I don't know if it's a government thing that it has to go bond first, then this hearing, or if it can be done the other way. Gary's giving me that, yeah, that's the way it goes. So, thanks, government, can we fix that potentially? I don't know if that's our level, state level, way up there. Okay, so there's that. Since we're, since I was here for the work session, we were, you know, trying to push for additional funding for, you know, federal, for the forestry side of it. That was all since I'd like to see us maybe pursue on our end, because again, I'd like to have that input on it. And then the, the final two cents on is, I feel like I'm stuck as a citizen, I'm stuck in a limbo between what to do with this. I 100% agree that we should have that property. I don't want to see it go into a commercial district. I don't want to see it go there because as I ran for city council many years ago, Bountiful's landlocked. We understand that like land like this, you just don't come across it in Bountiful anymore. However, I feel like at the same aspect, like we tagged too many things on. We have a $2.5 million increase for improvements, but we have no idea what those improvements are. Is it going to be even on the, the little site showing for the citizens that are saying yes for this parks and bond, even on their thing, they have no idea what is. Is it going to be all soccer fields? Is it going to be a skate park? Is it going to be basketball courts? Is it going to be, maybe we build another old pool like what we used to have over there by, across from the city hall, you know, for usage? There's, there's, I have a problem as a citizen saying, hey, here's money, but you're not telling me what this money is going for. And then additionally, just the last little section of it, the $2 million for the trails increase. In coming to the city council meetings and listening to it, it's always been about Washington Elementary's property. You know, we want this property. We don't want to see it go into commercial. We really want this. Let's put it before the citizens. If that is truly the case, then why are we asking for a $2 million, hey, let's go deal with trails up on the opposite end of the, the city? I will give the city council credit though, and on record though, you guys said at that meeting that none of that funding would be for a trail from, I can't remember the park's name, across from Bountify up to Mueller Park. There you go. Thank you for making that very well-stated, that none of that funding will go to that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Robert Jepson. I live at 1563 South Davis Boulevard. I'm, wish that we would have separated the bonds, the trails from the Washington Elementary. I'm in favor of Washington Elementary, but I think the, the funds for trails are exorbitant and not needed. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with, okay. Oh, we don't normally do two of these.
I'll look the other way. I, I do wonder, did the city buy the signs and place them out throughout the community to support that?
No, no.
Okay, good.
No, that's public. We're not allowed to do that. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. And back to you, Gary.
Thank you. No actions required. Happy to answer any questions that the council might want a clarification on.
Since we had a question, Gary, about the, well, or comments about the survey results, I believe the survey results, since they were presented in an open and public work session, are part of the city record and are accessible on the city website. But could you clarify if that is indeed the case for anyone that needs a little light bedtime reading?
Yeah, the, it's, it's a good question. It is available to the public, but because it wasn't part of the material that was provided to the city council in a packet, it's not part of the public record, but we're happy to share those results with anybody. We have, we've had requests for it, and I think there are people in this room that have received it. So very happy to share those results.
And then you and I were both giving signals that, in response to one of the comments, that the, the order in which we are required to do things comes not based on city ordinance, but based on state ordinance. Would, would you mind just clarifying that, that we are, we're not able to control the, the rules of the bond game in terms of when things are placed and, and given hearings?
Yes, this, and, and I was around when this law was enacted, maybe 12, 15 years ago, and the purpose of it was folks were concerned that cities were issuing bonds for things like recreation centers, and they felt that was inappropriate, and so that there ought to be a public hearing about issuing bonds that would compete with the private sector. That's why this law was put into place and why it was supposed to be done before the bonds were actually issued. There was a subsequent amendment to that law that said, oh, and by the way, if you're gonna have a bond election, it should be done before the bond election. And so that's why the law is the way it is. I tend to agree. I think the timing is odd, but we don't get to control that.
So if someone wanted to petition to change that, their appropriate place to take that petition would be their state legislators?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Gary?
May I ask?
Please.
And, and just to clarify, the anticipated, there was a lot of, one particular comment about taxes and the anticipated taxes to homes and businesses. If we could just get those numbers.
Sure. Yeah, the increase is, for the average home in Bountiful of $371,000 is $32.57 per year. That's actually not a 26% increase. It's a 17.5% increase. And just a couple of other points that maybe I could clarify. The veteran, yes, money has been raised primarily by the public for the Veterans Park, but that will be given to the city and the city will be using taxpayer dollars to maintain that park in perpetuity. I believe money was also donated to, from the county commission towards the park, or at least towards the artists of some of the implements in the park. Not to mention the fact that the ground was donated by the city for the park, so to suggest that it's not supported by public funds is intellectually incorrect.
Gary, what would the value, I mean, I know it's probably just an approximate guess on your part, but the value of the land that, that the city has donated for the Veterans Park to be built upon?
Two acres. It's roughly, I mean, based on some of the other property values that we've seen, we're talking about, about a million dollars in property value.
Is it two acres of property there?
I can't remember exactly. I think, I thought it was.
It's going to be smaller than that.
I think so.
Might be, yeah. Oh, you're, you know, the whole city campus, that piece of the city campus is about two acres. I want to say it's probably closer to half an acre.
Yes.
So, half an acre compared to what we're seeing elsewhere in town. So it's probably closer to $250,000, $200,000. And then regarding the signs, we've had reports already to the office that signs are placed illegally. We're following the same process that we follow with any time there's an election, which is we contact the organization or the individual that's responsible for the signs. We ask them to move the signs. And if they don't, then we take the signs, look, stack them next to the police department for them to, and then inform them we've taken the signs, and they come back and put them up. So, yeah, we've seen the signs around town that are unfortunately on public property or in public right of way, and they're, they are misplaced. Let's see. I think those are, I think those are the points. That I'm happy to answer anything else.
May, may I ask one more question? As far as our understanding with Davis County School District, regardless of what our personal feelings may be, they are the sole property owners and may do with it what they wish. And so at this point, just to clarify, we have no jurisdiction to, that they are able to sell it to whomever they see fit, and we are currently in first position. And I don't know if you want to expand on that?
No, that's correct. If they've given us the opportunity to buy it first, the council decided that, as was pointed out by a resident earlier, why not ask the residents what they'd like to do? And so the council's letting democracy work and asking the residents and, but if the voters choose not to, the city could still purchase it. But, you know, we'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it.
Gary, how many general obligation bonds does Bountiful City currently have?
Bountiful's never done a general obligation bond.
Okay. So some municipalities and other government entities are in the practice of, when a bond comes, when a bond expires, rather than allow the residents to stop paying that money, they'll issue a new bond. That doesn't increase taxes, but it doesn't decrease taxes either. How many of those do we have going right now?
We don't have any general obligation debt at all, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, with that, Alan, we'll turn some time over to you.
I think there were a couple.
I'm, I'm sorry, just, just one, one more. I, I apologize, Alan. And again, back to the school district, it is our understanding that they do intend to sell it, to sell the property, whether it's to us, it will go to someone else if it's not us.
Yes, the count, the school district, they have no, has been explained to me, they, they have no need to own a park. They, they wouldn't maintain it as a park and then lease it to others. Their park use is incidental to the school. So if there's no school, there's no reason for them to own grounds. So, yeah, they would, they would sell the property.
Thank you. I apologize, Alan.
I've got one more while we're, while we're waiting for just a minute. The, in the purchase agreement, the school notated practice field space for lacrosse, I believe it says. Could you expand on what your understanding of what that request is from the district and what it, you know, the meets and bounds of what it is?
Yes. So the school district, as, as the council knows from the beginning, intended that if the property was purchased as field space, that they would like the opportunity to use it for practices. What they've communicated to me is that that's specifically probably for lacrosse, and it would be for lacrosse practices at, in the hours after school during the school year, went during the lacrosse season. So I think the comment was said, extensive use. That's not what was being communicated, communicated to me. There's no intention for extensive use by the school district of, of the property. And as far as the inter-local agreement being available for review, of course, it has to be adopted by the city council, so it will be included in, as a public document before it's reviewed. So anybody can view that document like any other resolution that's considered by the city council.
One other comment, if I could.
Please.
There, there was a comment maybe a couple of times made that it would be nice to know what amenities the park is going to have before people decide if they want to vote for the bond. But, and that would be great. I, I agree with that, but it would be assuming a lot for us to go through the public process of deciding what amenities you're going to go on the park until we know whether people want to buy the park. So I, you know, it'd be great to, be great to have the information, but people will decide that information after they decide if they want the property.
And it's really the right order.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, the council gave direction when we went through this process that after, if the voters approve it, we would then go through a public design process to determine what the uses are, similar to what we've done with each of the last couple of parks that, and, and public spaces that we've designed.
Yeah, it might be worth saying again that we haven't decided anything that's going to be there. I mean, everything's on the table and, and public will have input and then we'll make decisions.
Yeah. I think the only thing we do know is that there is a lot of interest for improvements besides just the fields. We've had requests for pickleball courts, for trail, for a walking trail, for skate park, for a number of things.
Football stadium?
Yeah, football, yes, a football stadium. I forgot that one.
Yeah.
So we know that there's interest and, and, you know, I, I think the council's made a good decision to provide as much specific information as you can, 3.5 for the property, 2.5 for improvements, two for trails, and then to let the public give input on how that money is going to be spent if the public votes to buy the property and prove the bond.
Yeah. Thank you. Please, no one think that we're going to go, don't go out of here and say, oh, they just, they're planning on putting up a football field. Thanks. Please, Alan.
Do you need a motion to close the public conference?
I don't think so.
Don't think so?
Did, did, did we need a motion on that, Gary?
To close.
I didn't think so. No, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Appreciate your time tonight. This should be a pretty easy one. We have something called a computer replacement fund in the city, and each department is assessed a certain amount based on whether they have a desktop computer, how many monitors they have, printers and so forth. So we have a regular replacement schedule that we work on. We have about 200 to 250 computers. So last year, we came to the council and requested the purchase of 40 desktop computers. We're continuing that replacement process. And so we have requested the council approve the purchase of 40 desktop computers and monitors. By the way, these computers we've selected are, we've standardized on, we call that MFF. For the whole thing, but, but the maintenance is really easy to manage. And the other interesting thing. And the other interesting thing to point out is we have requested bids through the State of Utah purchasing website. But with most significant computer components, there's an interesting thing to call the registration. So Netwise is our preferred vendor, and they have what's called the Dell registration. And that gives them an inside track for the best price through Dell to purchase for us. It's so good that even Dell Direct won't compete. They won't even provide a bid for us because Netwise has that bid. So we went through this process last year too, where we requested through the State of Utah purchasing, we put it out there for any company to provide a bid, and nobody provided any bids because Netwise has that preferred registration. So Netwise gave us the price based on that registration. So that's what we present to you tonight and request the council approve the purchase of these computers.
Any, any questions from the council to Alan?
I have just one, if I may, Alan.
Yes.
Do you have any idea, I'm sure you do, roughly how many computers we have, the city has?
We have about 250, and it's a combination of desktop computers. We have mini laptops. We have a lot of iPads that are in the police vehicles that we maintain, keep track of. So 250-ish. And then we have another 30 or 40 servers and other high-end computers.
Thank you. I just think it's good to note that 40 in relation to 250, as it is connected to the five to seven-year rotation, is just good for context. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions? We'll look, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the computer replacement fund budget of $50,730. Nope, was that the right one? Forty, that's the budget, okay. $47,520 for the purchase of the 40 Dell computers and 40 Dell monitors.
Second.
Good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Alan. Like you made a big putt. All right, Clay, our city attorney.
Thank you. And some of those are on a much longer than a five to seven-year rotation. I have Rusty's computer, and Rusty's computer was rusty when I got here, so. I think we figured out, I think it's a 2009.
Maybe you'll be in the next lineup.
So.
Wow.
It still works? Okay, this is our campfire ordinance, campfires and burning ordinance. This is a good discussion to have on, on the heels of the, the guns and shooting discussion, firearms discussion we had earlier today. I'm just going to go over this briefly. If you want me to go into any detail, I'm happy to do so. But as you are aware, and as was talked about earlier today, the city has long been concerned about the fire danger in the foothills of the city. We've been working with the Fire District along with other cities in the county, the county itself, and the Forest Service to come up with some uniform guidelines that would be helpful, not only in the prevention of fires, but also for our citizens and people that come to our city to know what the restrictions are. So as such, we've met with the county many times and other cities in the Fire District and the Forest Service, and we came up with that half-mile-from-the-roads standard that was talked about earlier tonight. What that means is that, well, first of all, I would say that it prohibits campfires throughout the city unless they are in, with certain exceptions. Obviously, you can have, you can have fires within your homes and your fireplaces. You can also have fire pits in your houses in approved and improved facilities. That's a pretty popular thing right now. And there are some other things, other exceptions for agricultural burning, things of that nature, trainings for fire department. But for the most part, it prohibits campfires within the, or the use of fires within the city. In particular, it prohibits campfires and burning within one-half mile of any road, motorized trail, or residential structure from April 1st through October 31st. We're basically asking the council to approve the standard that has been approved in other cities so far. I believe Centerville, North Salt Lake have also already approved those, and the county has also already approved those, that same standard. As I mentioned, it provides regulations for fires on private lands as well as public lands for the remainder of the year. Talks about authorizations and permissions for fires. Provides the fire marshal the ability, gives the fire marshal the ability to prohibit fires under certain circumstances, high-risk, high-fire danger. It also makes it a Class B misdemeanor to willfully, recklessly, or negligently start a fire. It also repeals some of our, in order to enact these regulations, we had to, we had to ensure, as we oftentimes have to do, we had to make sure that it wasn't conflicting any other parts of our code. So I went through and checked the rest of the code. And we are looking at also a repeal of the, partial repeal and enactment. Actually, we're just asking, asking you to repeal and enact the fireworks restrictions. I ended up doing it this way because it was just cleaner to do it this way. It was a big mess to try and show all the amendments. So we're just going to ask you to repeal the current fireworks ordinance under city code 5-10-108, and then reenact it with, with the changes. The only changes are the references to the, to the, to the fireworks and camp, camping, campfires and burning ordinance. All the same restrictions that Chief Bassett has recommended are still in place. It still gives the city the ability to hold the annual public fireworks display. And then finally, we have a cost recovery mechanism in our city code under Title VIII. That, that's a cost recovery that we've used for if there were ever any hazardous material emergencies. And we thought that it would be appropriate to include fires, large-scale fires and that too. So it, it provides a mechanism for the city to recover the costs in responding to fires, extinguishing a fire. That would also include any other agencies that it, that were assisting in, in that response. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Would that cost recovery section you just mentioned, if, if our fire in 2019 had started within the city limits, you know, would that cost recovery section then kick in for our police costs and any damage to city infrastructure?
Are you, are you saying, are you using, are you using that as an example of, or are you saying would it apply to that retroactively?
As an example, not retroactive.
Yeah, so yes, part of our police response would be something that we could potentially seek as a recovery. Any emergency response services. And again, it extends to Fire District, Forest Service, other agencies that might come and help respond. Takes all that into account. Now, it should be noted too that the federal government already has the ability to do that and does do that often, but this just helps us to, gives us another, another tool to try and recover expenses.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Well, a comment that won't be very popular, and then a question. I'm really not a fan of cost recovery because we're already all paying collectively for an insurance policy to cover the events anyway. So just as a throwaway comment, please feel free to throw it away now. I just wanted to, it seemed like when I read through the, the ordinance, the right of homeowners to still have fires in their fire pit in their backyard is preserved.
It is preserved.
I just wanted to make sure that that's the case.
Correct, yeah. We had it in a different part of our code, and we just, it didn't make sense where it was. And so we took it out of the old part of the code, and it's now part of this campfires and burning ordinance. But yes, it's-
Perfect.
It is permitted.
Thanks.
Do you have a comment?
I'm sorry, did we talk about signage?
About what?
About, are we talking about fires being prohibited on the?
It's your ordinance.
Okay. Did we, have we talked about signage for enforcing it, or?
So this is-
Sorry.
No, this is just about the ordinance that would enact the half-mile restriction of fires along roads. The ordinance doesn't address signage.
Okay. So is that something we can talk about at another time, or? Okay.
Okay, with that, if there are no other questions, I'll look for a motion to approve.
A motion that we approve ordinance 2020-09 enacting 10-1-122, campfire and burning, and amending Bountiful City municipal codes.
And I'll look for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Back to you, Mr. Gray.
Okay, this is pretty simple, so I'll be brief. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask. But this is an interlocal agreement to contract with the Davis County Clerk Auditor's Office for Election Services. We do this every time we have an election. The only thing that's different about this particular one is that it also includes the services that are necessary for the general obligation bond. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
There are no questions. I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 2020-11 for the interlocal agreement for election services.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And Mr. Galen. We're always glad to hear it from you, Galen.
Thank you. It's good to be here with you. These next two items are, you probably want to take them separately, but are in connection with a request that was made from the August 25th meeting where we discussed CARES Act funding. And so the first one that is on the agenda is in relation to the Davis CARES Business Grant Program. And as we have received our first, what they're calling tranche or allocation of CARES Act funding, and the second one as well, that there is an expectation that our businesses will have a better shot at having a grant program given to them if we are participants in that. And so our participation share would be 27% or 352,516 of our money that would go to the county for administering this program to where our city's businesses would have a chance at that. So it is presented to you for approval to enter into this interlocal agreement with the county to transfer that money. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 2020-12, approving an interlocal agreement with Davis County for the Davis CARES Business Grant Program.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. And again, Mr. Galen.
Mayor and members of the council, the second item is related to CARES Act funds transferred to the South Davis Metro Fire service area. And it's a similar agreement, a little bit shorter, but deals with transferring $103,910 from our CARES Act allocation to the Metro Fire District and allows them to be able to be reimbursed for some of the costs that they have that are, they are pursuing the same goals that we are of controlling the virus effects in our community. So that is in giving them some support there. And so it's before you to give authority to enter into this interlocal agreement with the South Davis Metro Fire for $103,910.
There are no questions. I'll look for a motion.
Move to adopt Resolution 2020-13 for the interlocal with the Fire District for additional CARES Act funding.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. And that, that second is from Kendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That unanimously is adopted. Thank you very much, Galen. Appreciate it. And our final item, Dwyane Lloyd.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Tonight I bring for your consideration a joint resolution with the Sewer District to correct a kind of a longstanding oversight. The Sewer District conducted a survey of their district boundary and found that there were four areas in Bountiful that actually lie outside of their service district boundary. And so tonight's joint resolution is the first step in a two-step process to correct that and actually bring these areas which have been annexed into the city, kind of do another annexation, for lack of a better term, into the Sewer District's boundary. So the wording has been included in your packet. There's a map that shows the four areas in town which are currently outside of the district's boundaries. Most of these are uninhabitable. The largest of those, Area 2, is way up on the mound. It's a watershed protection zone. It's not, it's not really developed. And that is the case with basically all four of the areas. Area 1 and Area 3 do have a little bit of development in them. But this doesn't in any way promote any further development. It just brings those existing homes which are being provided service by the district into the service boundary and would incorporate them into any future action by the Sewer District. So in continuing our run of joint resolutions, this is Joint Resolution 2020-14 tonight. Be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
So anyone have any questions?
I've got a question. Lloyd, for the area, particularly in Area 2, would, would changing the boundary create any expectation for somebody who owns some type of an in-holding in the watershed area that, that they could now build? Because they would be now part of the Sewer District, that that had been, for some reason, a roadblock to the development of their property, and now a roadblock has been removed?
Right now, that area is not zoned for anything other than watershed protection. So it's not, it doesn't have that kind of an approval.
What about number four? That strikes me as maybe being somewhere near the, the B or?
Yeah, it's near the gun range.
Okay.
Basically, west of the gun range, there's a little portion of ground in that area. There's not very much of it that would be able to be developed beyond what is currently developed.
Okay, so you don't, in your opinion, we're not setting up any expectation for somebody who's, who's going to see this as their aha moment?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And there are no homes on any of these parcels?
In parcel 1 and parcel 3, there are current developments. Parcel 3, you know, will be down by the Summerwood subdivision.
Why would we include 2 and 4?
Just to make the district's boundaries coincide with the city limits.
Great.
Any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-14 declaring Bountiful City's intent to adjust our boundaries for our South Davis Sewer District.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's great. Any, any other, any, any other items, Gary, before we adjourn?
Just a scheduling item. We have, we'd like to schedule a closed session meeting to discuss pending litigation, personnel, or property next Tuesday, if, if you're available for that. We have, we just have some deadlines that we need to meet on a couple of issues and need to update you on these issues. Would, would the council be available next Tuesday night for that? It'd be 6 o'clock. We could do it whenever. There's no reason.
We could do that at 6 o'clock.
May, may I request, my son has a baseball game at 6:00, but I'm happy to come if that's the time that works best for everybody. But if we could have it be closer to 7:00, I'd appreciate it.
Or 5:00 or 5:10?
Wonder how much time we need.
If we want to start earlier, I'm fine doing that.
If we could either do 5:30 or 4:30 or 7:00, I think either of those would be better, one or the other. Be done by 7:00?
Oh, yes. Yeah. I'm flexible at either time.
Either one of those is good for me.
I can be 4:30.
As long as you'll text me at 4:35 and remind me I'm supposed to be here.
4:30.
All right, we'll, we'll get that on-
4:30 next Tuesday, you'll send a message out?
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get that agendaist, and thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone, for being here.
One comment before we go, if I could?
Sure.
I, I'd like to discuss at that same meeting the idea that if I were to remodel my home, I needed to stay at my brother's house outside- and needed to stay at my brother's house outside of Bountiful for a period of time while I'm remodeling my Bountiful home, that it would be okay for me to do that?
Yep.
It wouldn't constitute a move out of the city? So now that I've announced that, according to Robert's rules, I can bring that up in the next meeting and it can be passed even if it's not on the agenda. So I'd like to discuss that. Clint, you take care of all the legals.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm not moving away, I just want you to know.
Move to a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Please.
Francisco, I mean Fernando.
She didn't hear me.
What is this? That's honey from the spring. It tastes like peaches. It's, it's orchard honey.